For me, just navigating that landscape of public money for the first time and not knowing how that functioned, having Mary was instrumental in that. And the return on the investment in Mary in terms of just that impact that she had on that project was, I mean, we brought in $250,000 that went to water and those units and, you know, and we expanded and got 12 more units that are fully occupied. And it was a great return on the money. And it seems like, right now, there's these pools of money, but the straw is small because it can't function in the community unless there's somebody, a facilitator like Mary, helping people like me find the money and get it to work out. And so, I mean, and I know that, you know, with COVID, the last year and a half, she's been really busy dealing with all of that. And so, but at the same time, there's been these resources out there that it's been difficult to get to the projects. And so, I'm in favor of a dedicated person because I think the money spent there will be well spent and the impact on the community will be targeted in an area that's absolutely vital. So, that's what I've got to say about that.
Bruce, could you, did you write down your name and address for the record, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, as a reminder, if anyone would like to speak, please write down your name and address. Sometimes the microphone makes us forgetful, so, friendly reminder.
Linda Dirk, Visit Cook County. I just want to reflect a little bit on the value of our EDA. I really feel strongly of the great work that has been accomplished under Mary's leadership the last few years, which has included housing. And there's lots of other things that have happened. And I don't, I believe Mary could have done a lot more had there been a dedicated housing person. So, I'm in complete support of the HRA. And I think we can make a lot more great strides if we have that dedicated person. And I also wanted to do some correction a little bit. You know, we talk about tourism impact, and I spend a tremendous amount of time explaining that the employee housing, the hospitality worker housing, our partners in the lodging industry have really taken care of a lot of those folks in building their own housing. Right now, presently, I have two people working at Visit Cook County that, one desperately looked for housing, and one is still looking for housing. And these are people that have decided to live here, have their career here in Cook County, that are struggling. They are not the tourism front workers. And I think it's really important to remember that. We're a tourism-based economy, and I don't think that's going to go away for any time soon. And the other piece that I really want to talk about is, there's lots of churn around use of lodging tax. And there are covenants around the use of lodging tax, and we cannot use lodging tax to build housing. So, I just wanted to make sure that that record's set straight as well. Thank you.
I'm the Executive Director of the Cook County Chamber. And I also strongly endorse the creation of an HRA. As Bruce said, Mary's done sterling work with One Roof Community Housing to put some single-family homes here and some workforce rental housing in Lutson. The Hamilton sisters are, you know, we all admire what they're doing, one house at a But we need a concentrated effort. We're not unique in this. This is a nationwide problem. My view is that we kind of let our young people down in a lot of ways. When I was young, starting out, getting a first home was something that was at least possible. In my case, it took four years in US military to get the veterans help, but it was possible. We don't even do that much anymore. So, we need to step up and make certain that we have both rental and permanent housing available for permanent workers. As Linda said, housing for seasonal workers will always be primarily the responsibility of employers, not of the private market. Because it's very difficult to build an apartment house that will be filled for 12 weeks. And what do you do with the other four? It doesn't catch flow. And so, that's why many of our employers have done exactly that. They provide housing for their workers. The other thing I'd like to mention is, it's really, as it's important to recognize that the HRA's primary responsibility will not be on providing housing for seasonal workers, the other thing the HRA will need to avoid is the recriminations over the vacation rental market. You often hear, and you will hear, and the HRA will hear, that our long-term rentals have been converted into short-term rentals, and that's why people moving here can't find a place to live. And that's simply not true in large part. There is a small piece of Grand Marais where some of that has happened. The city administrator reckons that there are about a dozen residences that have been converted from long-term to short-term. In a county, that's not the case. Asked your county assessor how many he can count, and he told me recently, in the examination of the rental housing, he couldn't remember one. Oh, there are a few, but they're not, it's not a wholesale conversion. So, don't let that keep you from endorsing the development of an HRA that can go on permanent housing for the people of Cook County and for the people who want to move here. Thank you.
Testimony during the hearing.
What the heck? I don't know my phone number.
You don't call yourself?
I never call myself on the phone. Don't ask such hard questions. Good morning. I'm Mary Somnus, the EDA Director. A little bit longer. And as long as we have this moment, I want to introduce Beth Dross, who is the next EDA Director. I'm excited about that. I want to thank the commissioners for taking up this discussion, for considering this recommendation. I guess I'm pretty much the person that started rolling this ball. And the reason is, been supported by some of what you heard, by some of the other people who spoke. The work is great, and it is just too much for one person to do the economic and community development work that is needed here and the housing development solutions that are needed here. And I'm very grateful that you're taking up this discussion. I believe that you will, as Bruce has suggested, you will realize a great return on the investment in the wages of the person. We're going to talk about this a little bit later when we present the EDA budget or levy request for 2022. But in the five years that I've been here, the compensation package for the EDA Director position has been at about $70,000. And in the five years that I've been here, we've brought over $5 million in grant funds to the county, which leveraged with other investment, has resulted in like $38 million, I think is the number, in total economic development that I can count, that I'm aware of. So, and then that $38 million in investments, much of it increases the tax base. So, you know, it's like that old saying, you have to spend money to make money, kind of a thing, you know? It's an investment. It truly is an investment for the good of the community. And I, just briefly, in answer to Joyce's question, the HRA can address all kinds of housing needs. It doesn't have to be only workforce. It won't be seasonal because, well, I don't expect that it would be seasonal because I don't think any of the funding programs will support seasonal housing. The funding programs that you're going to chase after are for full-time, year-round residents, not for short-term positions. So, but right, and it isn't necessary that it's for workers either. It can do, the HRA can work on senior housing, which is a huge need. One of the things that we've been thinking about lately, we've tried to do assisted living a couple of times, and between the cost of development and the cost of operating, what we would have to charge people to live in an assisted living facility in the county just isn't reasonable. It just doesn't work. So, now, the idea is independent senior housing, where there's like a two-bedroom apartment, and on either end of the apartment, there's a bedroom and a bathroom with a locking door. So, Stacy and I can live together in an apartment, but we have our private space, and I can't look at her stuff when she's not home. And then we have, then we have a common living room kitchen area. And there's a cluster of these, maybe they're like tiny houses. That I've heard from the social worker here in Public Health and Human Services, that's the kind of senior living that our elders are looking for, more so than in an assisted living facility. They want to move into town, they want to get, you know, some of them are in the woods, off the grid, they need to get a more convenient lifestyle, but they don't necessarily want to give up all their freedom and their sense of place. So, that's another thing that can, you know, be worked on. We have the Housing Study from 2015 that says we needed to build 25 single-family homes a year for five years. So, that's 125 single-family homes. And 65 to 75 rental units. So, that's like a total of 200 units of housing that were identified as being needed in 2015. And in the five years that I've been here, I count 60 units of housing that have been developed in workforce. You know, I've known nothing about residential development, that's not my thing. But so, 200 minus 60, we need to build 140 more units of housing. So, I really do believe that having another person to do the work will enable the work to get done faster. And the time is now. We're way behind. You know, we heard five years ago from Bill Hanson that when Frank Hanson was on the county board, 35 years ago, people were talking about workforce housing. So, I think there's a lot of momentum, there's a lot of support, there's a lot of community interest, and I really appreciate your consideration of this. And I'll always be around to offer approvals if you're interested. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak?
I just feel like I'm putting myself in the hot seat here, but...
It's just warm.
Okay, just warm. I'll take it. I'm speaking strictly just from a person who I feel like I've played literally every single role of this situation of what you all are talking about. So, I don't know if just my observations and those different roles will help at all, but I've been here. Stevie Plummer, I'm sorry.
And then sign in.
Okay.
Hydro left.
All right. I started here 10 years ago as a year-round resident, and I remember the housing issue for long-term, year-round housing being an issue even back then. It was very much talked about with seasonal employees, with year-round employees, that I've worked several different jobs here in the county. And I just, being a person, you know, looking for housing back then, and then I started kind of when the vacation rentals started really taking off about six years ago, I started managing properties for other people here in the county. And it's no wonder why there are so many people on board with that because it's a great income. It can be tricky finding, being a, finding a year-round job here. And so, that did provide a lot of local people a very great source of income year-round wise. And then I just recently became my own vacation rental business. So, I feel like I've kind of gone through all of these steps and seen all sides of things. It's really tough because we have friends and family who want to come visit us, and they don't have a place. I manage probably eight properties for several different people, and they're booked 100%. And if you don't book these places last year, you don't come here. You go online. People can't find places. So, the demand is there. You know, I don't think that that's an issue, but it is hard to see this kind of domino effect of like, it starts at, this place is a touristic town. Like, we have a lot of money coming in from tourism. The tourism is there, people want to come here. There's not places to come here. And when they do get here, businesses can't be open because they don't have employees. I know several business owners that literally have employees in their own homes that are driving it from Duluth because they can't find employees here. And people want to come here, they can't find a place. So, you literally have the employers doing whatever they can to get employees to even be open, you know, a fraction of what they used to be able to. There's businesses that want to be open year-round, but obviously, year-round housing is not an option, and seasonal housing isn't another option for people. So, it's just this huge domino effect. And I think that vacation rentals, it is really easy to point the finger at one, at one particular place, but I do see this over the long term really being a housing issue. Something like apartments were mentioned, that I believe would be an incredible investment. And I just really want to second Jim Boyd in saying that I hope that the HRA is able to focus their energies, you know, not on this huge vacation rental issue housing, but really on what is needed and has been needed for so long. I think vacation rental might be another topic, but I really hope that this HRA will keep focusing on what needs to be done. But I fully support that.
Would anyone else like to speak?
Microphoned.
Would anyone else like to speak for the public hearing? Mike Carlson, and I just want to breezily state that I am in favor of the investment in the HRA. I think most of us in the community recognize that the housing shortage is a problem, and we try to hire people from outside the community, and this is really a great one. The person just before me, Stevie, would probably be an excellent candidate to take this job, by the way. Make sure I mention that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mike, could you also sign in? I already, oh, you did well. I would like to show us who I know.
Would anyone else like to speak at the public hearing, please?
Good morning, everybody. I'm Barbara Jean Myers. I'm not used to being, to speaking in this capacity. When I worked here, I was at the radio station interviewing people. So, it's a little bit of a role reversal to give an opinion, but I'm excited that this is happening, or at least potentially happening. I moved here in the early 2000s, and it was very, very challenging to find housing. I think I moved 10 times in four years. And this was before vacation rentals were even really a big thing. So, it's been an issue for a very long time. And it's something that I think as a community, we need to invest in. I am curious about what the board for the HRA will look like. I think I heard on WTIP that it will be the same board as the EDA. And I wonder about that. I'm not necessarily opposed, but I think having some broader community representation because while housing and economic development are linked, I think there might be some different people who might have something to add to the discussion who may not necessarily be interested in being involved with the EDA. Yeah, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak at the public hearing on potential forming of an HRA? Anybody else? Third and last call. Then I guess I would like to close the...
How are we going to deal with public talent?
Thank you. Ooh, that was close.
Regarding the purpose.
Sorry.
Good morning, Commissioners. James Yorky, County Administrator. And Rena has asked me to repeat what I said at the beginning because we did not have the audio going.
That's why you should never have me do it.
You know, we're winging it here. So, anyway, I just wanted to repeat what I said, which was that for folks who have not been paying attention to the conversation around this, which I doubt there are many of those, but I want to explain what a Housing Redevelopment Authority is. And what it is, is an organization that is solely focused on developing housing in communities. There are over 230 HRAs in the state of Minnesota. And they can be a creature of the city, or the county, or even a joint city-county HRA. And the way it works is, there's a dedicated, at least one dedicated staff person whose job it is to oversee the acquisition of resources, grants, and so on, to fund housing projects. And in our community, as many of the commenters have noted, we have a need for all kinds of different housing. We talked about workforce housing, the difficulty that organizations like the hospital and the Sautier Mountain Clinic and ISD 166 are having in recruiting staff people because there's no place for them to live. In fact, there have been instances in which job offers have been made, and then the candidate looked for a place to live and ultimately had to decline the job offer because he or she could not find a place. So, that's what we're facing here, and it's something that affects the quality of life for everyone who lives here. So, regardless of whether you think you have a dog in this fight, you actually do because these organizations that are having trouble recruiting are the organizations that serve us all. So, it's a vitally important thing. And I'm really gratified by the high level of interest that I've seen in the community over the last number of months. A lot of folks have been working on trying to find a solution to this problem. There is a housing work group that is part of the Joint Powers slash Community Leadership Committee that has been working on this for a number of months. And we've had, I don't know, I think it'd be fair to say dozens of people, at least a couple dozen people, rotating in and out of that group. So, there's so much interest, and there's so much desire to work together to address this challenge. And so, I just want to, I just want to explain what the HRA is, what it would do. It would enable us to get resources that currently we don't have access to. So, some folks mentioned that Mary Somnus has done a great job working on getting, partnering with One Roof to get housing into the community. But that hasn't been her sole focus. She is, she's been the Director of the EDA, and that's primarily about economic development. And certainly, housing is a piece of that. But it's, like she said, it's just too much work for one person to do. And this is a longstanding challenge that this community has faced. So, I'm just really excited about the possibility of creating this HRA. And really, I'm grateful for all the folks who are here this morning to voice their support and also offer their concerns. It's not going to be an easy thing to do. There's a lot of work to define exactly what the scope of this is going to be and how it's all going to fit together. But I think we're taking a big step in the right direction. So, just want to say thanks to all the folks who are here this morning. So, I do have several written comments that were submitted that I'd like to read now. The first is from Richard Olson, who resides at 27 Arrowhead Trail in Hurwood. And he writes, Dear County Commissioners, the need for more housing of many types, especially for lower-income households, comes up at every turn in our community conversations. From infrastructure, land availability, zoning, height restrictions, and funding sources, to efficiencies and drawing developers, the conversations have gotten louder and make clear the need of having an HRA. Number one, in order to move forward with more housing more quickly, we need to increase our capacity to get the work done. Number two, an HR director can help developers with grant writing and grant management to help make the budget make sense. Number three, we have to invest some of our own, quote, "skin in the game," unquote, in order for other funders to know that we are committed to this work. Thank you for your consideration of this important issue. The next letter I have is from Jim Cordis, who resides at 189 Barker Lake Road in Lutson. And he writes, Cook County lacks senior housing and has no assisted living for its residents. We need one major facility to furnish senior housing, assisted living, memory care, rehab, and long-term care. This place could offer walking distance to downtown Grand Marais to access all things needed for daily life and shuttle service when necessary. Grand Marais seniors now move out of the county to work for retirement homes and assisted care. It seems that the Cook County government is much more interested in attracting tourists than furnishing the basic local housing needs. Tourists are important, but for much too long, we have ignored our seniors. I'm sure that there would be money available through our many charitable organizations and grants for a good start to look into this. Key potential locations would be the Artist Point area, controlled by the EDA, and another could be the newly acquired Passion Pit area. We do not need condominiums in these locations. We need senior housing. Excuse me. My idea of a pleasant welcome and senior facility, which I would set as an example, is the Margaret S. Parmley residence of Chisago City in Chisago County, Minnesota. Please check out this facility as a goal. It is one that my wife and I are considering if there is no action from local government. All right. The next communication comes from Pat Campanaro, who is a consultant for the Small Business Development Commission. And she writes, Hello, Commissioners. I unfortunately can't attend a public hearing regarding the formation of an HRA due to a prior commitment, so I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you this way. As a community, housing at all levels has been identified, has been identified a need forever, or so it seems, and a variety of efforts. Tourists are important, but for much too long we have ignored our seniors. I'm sure that there would be money available through our many charitable organizations and grants for a good start to looking into this. Two potential locations would be the Artist Point area controlled by the EDA, and another could be the newly acquired Passion Pit area. We do not need condominiums in these locations, we need senior housing." "My idea of a pleasant welcome-in senior facility, which I would set as an example, is the Margaret S. Parmley residence of Chisago City in Chisago County, Minnesota. Please check out this facility as a goal. It is one that my wife and I are considering if there is no action from local government." All right, the next communication comes from Pant, I'm sorry, Pat Campanero, who is a consultant for the Small Business Development Commission. And she writes, "Hello, Commissioners. I unfortunately can't attend a public hearing regarding the formation of an HRA due to a prior commitment, so I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you this way. As a community, housing at all levels has been identified, has been an identified need forever, or so it seems, and a variety of efforts have produced results. Over the past four years, the Cook County Grand Marais EDA has supported the development of both single-family homes and an apartment complex in Lutzen. It has also assisted private contractors and developers with smaller projects. However, these results still fall far short of what is needed for our community as a whole. Think of what the results could be if we had a coordinated effort led by an HRA executive. An HRA undertakes or assists housing projects that will provide decent, affordable housing, and undertakes or assists economic development or redevelopment projects with a goal of creating jobs and expanding the tax base. HRAs also have the ability to secure and administer local, state, and federal grants and loans, and other community development programs. With a singular focus on housing, an HRA can take a holistic approach to our housing needs, whether they be low-income, those that are unhoused, workforce, or senior needs." There are thirty-four counties across Minnesota that have established HRAs, and HRAs have been successful in providing a variety of housing programs. Some examples include Stevens County, Minnesota uses tax increment financing, revenue bonds, and other financing tools for business and housing development. Examples of the work performed with these tools, the service option for, examples of the work performed with these tools include the service option for seniors' housing units. The Duluth HRA assists its clients with a wide variety of focused services, from homeownership opportunities to rental rehabilitation assistance, including family housing, family self-sufficiency program, Section 8 rental housing assistance, as well as single housing and rental rehabilitation... I'm sorry, single, single-family housing. Oh goodness. Thank you, Molly. "Section 8 rental housing assistance as well as single-family and rental rehabilitation programs." The Chisago County HRA has developed home purchase assistance and senior housing development. The Aitken County HRA has developed subsidized public housing. The Brainerd HRA owns and or manages affordable rental housing, administers several rental assistance programs, and provides rehab services to owner-occupied, renter-occupied, and commercial properties. Scott County works with developers to unlock local, state, and federal support such as tax, incentives, grants, workforce development, and retention programs, and roads or other infrastructure needs. Candy Ojai County HRA, McLeod County HRA, and Wilmar HRA publishes a joint Facebook page advertising their programs, which you can find at facebook.com/kcHRA. We need as many tools in our toolbox as possible, and I believe an HRA would offer an efficient and effective addition in our quest to provide housing options in Cook County." Thank you, Pat Campanero. And then the last letter that I have comes from Virginia Danfelt in Hovland, and she writes, "To the Cook County Board, first off, thank you for your work and consideration of Cook County's workforce slash affordable housing challenge. I have two main concerns about this issue. First is that while I don't have an issue with what a Housing Redevelopment Authority seems to be able, seems to be able to potentially do, I do have a concern with its funding, i.e. public funds through a property tax increase. I'm personally not opposed to paying taxes for a wide variety of uses. Rather, my concern is for the broader population, those who may find the increase a burden, as so many other items are increasing in cost. I would rather see Cook County consider other tools at its disposal that could address the housing challenge initially, before resorting to increasing taxes, that will be a hardship for some. The housing study done in 2015 listed some recommendations. I do not know what of these have been enacted or if they currently pertain. From what I've read about the HRA vehicle, it can use various projects to control the market, which is what needs to be done to create workforce and affordable housing. What other tools is the county considering that can control this market? What is the county's overall strategy to this situation? If an overall strategy has not been created that uses multiple tools to address multiple factors, I encourage Cook County to look at what is driving the market, what can be done to change parts of that market, and develop an overall strategy that addresses this from multiple fronts. For example, if it is determined that year-round vacation rentals are reducing long-term rental options, could Cook County ban year-round vacation rentals and thus increase the pool of rental opportunities? This would not involve a tax increase. However, this could prove to be so unpopular that the option is not chosen. If this is the case, would it be fair to impose a, I'm sorry, impose a countywide tax increase to support housing if other forces are left unchecked that drive the housing shortage? What have other counties done that are in this situation? I do not think creating an HRA alone will be the answer, it is one tool. Forming it will, however, create a bureaucracy that may or may not, depending on the actual projects, help the target housing market. Is there a mechanism to sunset or temporarily pause the HRA if necessary based on performance? Rena Rogers put forth an interesting idea that the Cook County lodging tax regulations be changed so that this revenue stream can be used for infrastructure projects such as funding an HRA. This idea is worth looking into. My second concern is with the component of the HRA, should you vote to organize one? This is having all HRA housing projects built with aggressive energy efficiency features, from the building envelope to the mechanicals. Structures could be economical, or should be economical to operate, and have a low-carbon footprint. Since this type of investment costs more upfront, it becomes a threat to the bottom line. This creates another challenge to an already quite challenging situation. However, since we as a society are in an environmental crisis due to climate change, Cook County should take the lead in building or renovating housing stock that takes this into serious consideration. A robust approach should become a policy issue. It is an issue of public health and safety for which the county has responsibility. And she adds, "Pranketically, I found it important that the housing..." Let me start over. "I found it important that in the housing survey done in 2015, both homeowners and renters listed energy efficiency as their top choice of features. I will be the first to admit that I am not knowledgeable about all things discussed or tried by the county with regard to this issue. I have not chosen to take the time to become well-versed on this complex subject, so I apologize if I have assumed something in error. I simply want to bring these two items to light for the public hearing. Thank you for your consideration." And that is all I have in terms of submitted comments.
All right. Anyone else like to speak for the public hearing? Going four times? Five times? Six times? I will now close the public hearing. Thank you, everyone, for your comments or concerns, both oral and written. And, yeah, it has been an issue talked about for quite some time. And I was first a part of it back, I think, in 2015. And I think now we can, we've had our public hearing, and we as a board can now enter back into the Commissioners' Room, which will be livestreamed and people can view it there, or there is some seating available that is adequately spaced if someone would like to come in for that, and at which point the board may take action after this public hearing, and otherwise we'll resume our regular meeting as well. So thank you all.